This is the council chair determination to hold electronic meetings without anchor location. In accordance with Utah Code 5232074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. The state of Utah has developed the COVID-19 transmission index through a collaborative effort among state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry, and business leaders. As of November 1st, 2020, Weber County was in the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the redevelopment agency, will be held electronically through November 30th, 2020. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting and public hearings on agenda items designated for input or during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options: telephonic message at 801-629-8158, public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput, or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. This statement is issued, or was issued, and became effective November 2nd, 2020. Thanks again for your patience, letting me read that. And also, please let the record reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Lopez, who's asked to be excused. First up, Vice Chair Blair has offered to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Chaburka. Yeah, I would ask that all council members and those joining us would please rise with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please join us in a moment of silence. Okay, so the first item on the agenda, well, the third item, I should say, is a recommendation that we are actually postponing until we can meet these folks in person. It was for boots and bunkers, so we will invite them back once we're able to do that, hopefully in the new year. We have approval of minutes, the regular minutes of May 12th and May 19th, 2020. Council, next item to the joint work session of April 14th and the work session of July 14th, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Chair. I've reviewed all of those minutes and found them to be accurate to my recollection.
Thank you. And the joint work session of June 9th and the work session of July 7th, 2020. Councilmember White.
Yes, Chair Chaburka, I've reviewed those and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection.
Thank you. And the work session of June 2nd, the closed session of June 9th, and regular and closed sessions of July 21st, 2020. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes, Chair, you're correct.
And finally, the joint work session of May 12th, regular meeting of June 2nd, and the special meeting of June 9th, 2020. Councilmember Hayer.
Yes, Chair Chaburka, I've reviewed those and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection and would make a motion that we approve the minutes listed in the agenda.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Councilmember Stevens to approve the minutes. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for reading all those. It sounds like we did a little catch-up. And we have an item for common consent, the Christmas Village Committee. So we're considering the reappointments of some folks, Cindy Wheloff, Jacob Chadwick, Nikki Lovell, Brenda Verup, and Craig Baylick, and the appointments of Nick Morris and Diana Meiser. I hope I'm saying that correctly to the Christmas Village Committee. This is a voice vote, or I guess we need a motion first. Would anybody like to propose a motion?
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the Common Consent Agenda as is listed.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Councilmember White. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. We really appreciate all of that service. Thank you all so much. Next item up is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan Amendment. And we're inviting Great Montgomery and some other staff that may present as well.
Greg, this is Brady. Want me to take it?
Yes.
Okay.
So sorry, Brady. Brady heard. Please, you're up.
You're good. So, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee, or sorry, members of the council, and Mark Johnson. Doesn't look like the mayor's on this evening, so. Good evening. Hopefully, everybody's doing well and staying safe out there. So yeah, what we are discussing now is the FY '21 and '25 Capital Improvement Plan Amendment. So what this is, what we're putting forth is a consideration and recommendation before the council to consider the capital improvement plan and amendments, which would include proposed project W001 for the replacement of outdated water meters. So with that, to kind of give some background on that and overview with this amendment, Ogden City Culinary Water System is one of the largest in the state. We have a little over 24,000 meters in the ground as it is. And recent, we implemented, in the last several years, a fixed base metering system, which allows meters to be read remotely. And this project is essential to this, to the system being able to function properly, if you will. And why so? Basically, replacing old Badger meters with new Neft2 meters will help increase the number of meters that can be read remotely. In addition to that, it will help increase meter reading efficiency, accuracy, and improve the information that is communicated to the residents, so it'll be more interactive. And yeah. And then also of recent, in the last several years, we've continually focused on mainly smaller meters and Badger meters needing to be replaced. And so what this plan or this proposal is being, would be more or less focused at is some of the bigger meters that are out there. So yeah, with all the work that we've done in the last several years, this would be adding to those in more years and continuing to build on being able to read remotely. And it's, why it's so essential is obviously as time progresses, meters oftentimes will wear down as part of the process and wear and tear, and will get less and less accurate. And especially with the Badger meters, they kind of have another system that they're on, which causes it a little bit, causes it a little bit harder for other, our personnel to read more so and is more involved. And so this will help us get on that big space system. So with that, let's see, I'm just trying to go over a few other notes. So up to this point, so since last November to this November, we've replaced around 237 Badger meters. And then currently, there's approximately about 274 Badger meters that need to be replaced. Like I had mentioned a little bit earlier, it's these meters, these 274 that are out there, they'll mostly be in the realm of 2-inch to 8-inch meters. And those are definitely more higher in price, if you will. And so that's more or less why we're proposing for this board, to help us get those on this big space system. Over the last several years, we've, it ranges as to how many we're able to replace from year to year. But over the last several years, I mean, it ranges from anywhere from 300 to 700, depending on how many smaller meters we replace, because they're a little bit cheaper versus the bigger meters, obviously, cost a little bit more. And we're kind of coming down to the point where we just got to get some of these bigger ones replaced. And then, yes, this requires an amendment, a budget amendment. I don't know if, Lisa, do you have anything that you want to mention on any of the budget amendment from finances standpoint at this point? I don't know.
No, this is part of the $66 million budget amendment and the three-year capital improvement plan for water. So this will be adopted with the utility bond funds.
Okay, so I mean, that's pretty much everything that I have. I guess if you have any questions or concerns, I'm hoping to try and fill those now. If you'd like to discuss.
A bit. Thanks so much, Brady. Any questions or comments? Maybe just for the public's knowledge, you know, I guess I'm curious why this particular item is pulled out to talk about versus, you know, talking about that whole package. And why does the council have to approve this at this time?
Oh, I've understood it, and Lisa, and anybody else, Justin, you can always chime in too. I've understood it was where these will be used towards purchasing supplies as maintenance, in a sense. That's more or less why they've got to be pulled out from, like, it's not like your traditional CIP of where we go out to contract and utilize a contractor per se versus utilizing them for supplies for maintenance, if you will. So that's how I've understood it. So Lisa or Justin?
Yes, so the action before council that Brady is addressing is actually to appropriate or to adopt this project into the current year CIP plan, so that when we fund this $6 million, this $1 million to this program, it's an approved CIP.
Great, thank you.
The other projects are already in the CIP. This is the one that wasn't.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other questions or comments. Thanks so much for your report, Brady.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to entertain any motions. Well, it's a public hearing, so should we have some time for some people to speak? If you look under my headings accordingly. But Erica, are you helping to manage the meeting tonight? Or Brandon, if you wouldn't mind telling people how they might comment?
Yes, I'm covering for Brandon tonight, so I'd be happy to do that.
I thought that was great.
To participate in tonight's public hearing, first of all, you have to be joining us via Zoom. You can raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen. And if you're joining us via telephone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand. And just a reminder, this is comments for this item specifically.
Perfect, thank you. I see your green box lighting up. Councilmember Hayer.
I was just noticing there aren't any hands going up, and I was going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Hayer, a second by Councilmember White, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. I just saw the green box.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, yeah, it's hard to tell who wants to speak.
Happy to make the motion on that, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Chair, I would make a motion concerning proposed ordinance 2020-52, that we adopt that ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Vice Chair Blair to adopt the proposed ordinance 2020-52. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you. And next up, we have a report from the Planning Commission about the storm-water-low-impact development standards. Welcome back, Greg.
Sorry about that. So as you mentioned, this is a recommendation coming from the Planning Commission to make amendments to zoning ordinance. And this all has to do with what is called low-impact design, or LIDs. The state has issued the requirement for cities to adopt provisions regarding the low-impact design. And our present zoning ordinance did not support some of those concepts. And so it's necessary that we do an amendment to the ordinance to reflect these changes. Now, what a low-impact design is, is a system that allows, by natural means, to process stormwater, create infiltration, evaporation, reuse the stormwater, so that we improve the quality of the water that exists in the community. Because, as you recall, many of the commercials years ago, it all goes downstream. And so we want to make sure the water quality is such that the rivers and streams are clean. And by being conscientious about how we treat stormwater runoff, we can improve those water quality systems. So as I mentioned, this is a new state requirement. It's required that new development must manage the 80th percentile rainstorm. And the revisions we're talking about are things that can help create that green infrastructure and follow the principles that the state has mandated. One of the questions that we spoke about in the work session last time was that this is applicable to all new development greater than acre, or if it's less than acre, to pieces that, as they're combined, become an acre or larger. Also, if it's a redevelopment project, if the redevelopment project is increasing the amount of impervious surface by 10%, they also would be subject to these standards. Now, there are some revisions that say if things are not practical, then the LID cannot, will not be required. For example, a high water table, or types of soil, or steep slope, or things that affect runoff to begin with and won't allow water to normally percolate through into the soil. Those things are understood, and so those are exempt from the LID. But generally, we try to look at some of those areas where we can apply it, whether it be our storm detention basins, green roofs, other types of things. So the proposed changes take place in a couple areas. One is in the definition section of zoning ordinance, just defining what it is, that it's a natural process of landscaping. The ordinance talks about different things that we do besides the definition. It talks about design, parking lot, how can you use your landscaped islands instead of being barriers or bumper areas, create them into areas to harvest the rain and allow the water to percolate. So examples of some LID concepts are, we just put these up to give you an idea of different approaches. One example is what they call the wet swell. And these are either the shallow wetland areas. We've created some in the city. We have some detention basins that are much like this. Some of the things we've created, as we look at collecting water off the roads and then allow that to sit in those landscaped areas and then overflows, or then taken down into the storm rain after the vegetation that can sift in the water. The dry swell, where we have, and I apologize, the lights just went off in the room, so it won't turn on unless I go move the switch, so I'll keep going.
It makes you look very spooky and movie-like.
That's not good, spooky as it is. But allow just water to run off into these areas and let the grass or the vegetation do the filtration. Rain gardens, where actually water is directed here, it stays there and creates a different type of habitat and then filters down into a system. So it gives you some different examples of things that would meet the LID. So we use that and define those in the ordinance as, here are some provisions that you can use to meet this criteria. And then besides the definitions and the general standards, we apply them to our parking ordinance and to the general landscape, encourage people to do these types of things. So the Planning Commission reviewed this, and they recommended, by a 9-0 vote, to approve these changes to allow the low-impact designs to be a consideration. And really, it makes sense when we are better utilizing our land to have these types of design standards in place, rather than focusing away from being conscious of how we manage water.
Thanks so much, Greg. Yeah, I love it. Any questions or comments for Greg?
Chair, I have one question for Greg.
Yes.
When developers come into the city, do you review the landscaping and what we're talking about tonight with these landscapers?
We do. When we have site plans come in, and we always look at their landscape plans, and we'll often suggest to them some things they may do to help better utilize their space and the types of plant materials they use. With this, we also will now be looking to try to direct them to do this as a more cost-effective way to create their stormwater detention. And these revisions help them to be able to do that now, rather than saying, oh, the ordinance doesn't allow you to do that.
Okay. So we review the ordinance that we're looking at with these developers then?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any this time. Thanks so much for your presentation, Greg.
Okay.
So this time, we'd like to receive input from the public. If anybody would like to make comment about this particular item. I don't think there's anybody new on the call, so yeah, you would just raise your hand in the Zoom call, and then we will allow you to speak. Not seeing any hands raised. So I'd be happy to entertain emotions unless there's more discussion.
Chair, I'd make a motion then that we adopt ordinance 2020-55.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Councilmember White to adopt ordinance. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you all. And now we're going to have time for public comments, because if you all noticed, we do have a closed executive session on the agenda for the final item. So we're going to do public comments now and then comments from the mayor and council members before we go into that. So at this time, it's an opportunity to speak on any item. And we just ask that you state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. Not seeing any hands raised, so I'm hopeful that everybody's understanding how to do that. Yep, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I guess we'll move on to comments from the mayor.
And Chair, I'm sorry, could we have maybe Johnson try to get on? I just am worried that, I don't see anybody able to get on. So I just want to make sure that we're not having the same issue. Maybe if Randy's on or somebody from the city.
Oh, Heath's raising his hand first. Thanks, Heath.
Thank you. I just, it seemed weird that.
I know. I appreciate that. Thank you. Heath, maybe we'll allow Heath to see if he, you can lower your hand, Heath, or you can go ahead and keep your hand up, and then we'll know you have a public comment. Looks like he does. And I think it's Heath Sato that has his hand raised. Do you see that also, Eric?
Yeah, yeah, hold on one second.
You bet.
Sorry about that.
Thanks, Councilmember White.
Okay, Heath, now you're unmuted, and you should be good to go.
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Heath. Sorry about that if we missed your hand.
No, it's okay. I was having a little issues, but I'm not sure who it was. Anyways, Heath Sato, Ogden resident, perennial city council commenter. I wanted to thank you, Councilmember Chaburka, for sending me some of the helpful COVID-related information after I sent out an email to the mayor and all the council members last week. I've sent the mayor a couple of emails over the last month, but I haven't received any, even a confirmation receipt for them. So I've yet to hear what the mayor's plan is to deal with the skyrocketing housing prices, or if he plans to. I've only heard complaints from him that he's being called out for his lack of vision and action. I also wanted to say thank you to the city council for hearing my concerns regarding the pandemic almost three months ago and having the courage to do as much as they could by formally encouraging all citizens of Ogden to wear masks in public areas. Sadly, our leadership from the president to the governor down to the mayor have not felt similar urge to protect lives by doing whatever they could until the governor ignored political pressure and finally did the right thing this week. Here we are with full ICUs spiking infection rates, and we've only just begun heading into a very long, dark winter, because we acted like this would go away if we did almost nothing about it. And even though the deaths in our community are tragic, there's a wider issue of lingering health issues from COVID. Every case we stop now is potentially one less burden on our healthcare system down the road. Just today, I saw a study published in The Lancet, a peer-reviewed medical journal, that 20% of people that have contracted COVID and survived are experiencing mental illness issues. One in five people, with our numbers hovering near 3,000 new cases in Utah per day, that is potentially 600 more people experiencing mental illness in our state every single day, a state that already suffers from the fifth highest suicide rate in the nation. We're already seeing rising homelessness in our area. So if you combine skyrocketing housing prices with potentially soaring mental illness in the state, it doesn't take much to imagine that we may be looking down the barrel of things getting much, much worse if we do nothing now. The governor finally had the political courage to do something about the pandemic, but he's not doing enough about how to. The governor finally had the political courage to do something about the pandemic, but he's not doing enough about housing costs. I wonder if we will have to wait again until it was a crisis before we rely upon the state leadership to do something. We could have done more about this pandemic and we did not. We may be paying the price for those poor choices for a generation or more. I do hope lessons will be learned from this. And that's the time I needed for today. Thanks for listening and may you all be safe.
Thanks, Heath. If there's anybody else that'd like to make any comments, you can raise your hand. Okay. Now it's Mayor Caldwell's turn. Sorry about that.
I'll, I'll just say with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I just want to respect all of those people that have given so much service and so much sacrifice to our ability to agree and disagree, which we see on most city council Tuesday nights. And I appreciate that. We have a tremendous amount of military support and people that have done amazing things in our community, and I just want to appreciate that and respect that and tell them how much we respect and admire what they've, what they've done. And I've, I've got a military family and it, it really matters to me. Veterans Day is a, a really important day and we thank and respect everybody that has been willing to go through that and to make those commitments to our community and to our country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any council member comments this evening?
Chair, if I
Oh, yeah, Councilmember White first and then Councilmember Stevens.
Chair, if I could make a, a quick comment. You know, many of us were impacted by a prominent person in our community passing from COVID this past weekend. You know, I was awakened, I know this is embarrassing, but I was awakened at nine eight, or nine PM when Governor, Governor Herbert Herbert sent out the emergency notice about the mask mandate. And I know that there are people on both sides that, you know, I have rights on the right side, I have rights on the left side, but man, I'm getting tired of it. Just wear a bleeping mask. It is a seventy percent less transmission between all of us. And let's get through this bad part. We're going into the Thanksgiving. Thanks, man. But just wear a mask. Gosh, I, I just, if, if it could just save one more person, if it could help as, as Heath had mentioned on mental health and all of the other things that are, we're going to see down the road. I, just wear a mask and let's get through this. Let's get through this together. I've said this from the beginning. Let's be vigilant. Let's do it. Wash your hands and thanks, everybody for putting on your masks. I appreciate it. So that's all I have to say. I'm just, I, I, I can't say it any stronger than that. I'm tired of being in my basement. I, and I want to get out and play and be and have fun. And so if we all just wore our masks, we could do that. Okay, now your turn, Doug.
Thank you. Chair, I'd just like to thank Eric for step, helping us out with our meeting tonight. This shows the talent and the expertise that we have in our, with, in our council staff. And I want to thank him for stepping in and doing that. Also, I go along with the mayor when he mentioned Veterans Day. I'm very appreciative of those who are actually that providing the safe, the safety for us and everything. And so we have the opportunity to
Don't they know it's council night? I always think that when my phone's ringing, like, don't they know? Go ahead, sorry.
Anyway, it, it, this gives us an opportunity to have the freedoms that we have in our country. We have the opportunity to vote and that's, that's what the veterans are providing for us, the opportunity of doing that. Also, I was listening to the mandate that the governor said. And, you know, we're, I know, I understand that we all have rights and privileges, but wearing a mask is not that difficult. And, and this gives us an opportunity to share and, and to appreciate and, and not spread this virus to other individuals. And, and I get that. I, I get that we need to have our rights protected, but, but this is a health issue and we're at twenty percent at the present time, and that means one in five will, can have the, will have the could contract this virus. And, and this is not a light statement to do that. So, you know, it's just a an item that we need to do and just to wear, to wear our mask. I also was around the Christmas village and they're starting to set that up. And I know the committee has a tough assignment this year because of COVID. And, but I appreciate their service in trying to make or present our Christmas village and and make something happen for our Christmas season going. And the best thing we could do is not only enjoy Christmas village, but also do our shopping in Ogden if we have an opportunity. Thank you.
Any other comment? Like, oh, there's Councilmember Nadolski. I thought I saw you come on before. Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to support Marcia's comments and Doug's comments, but Marcia's quote specifically wear a bleeping mask.
Is that our new motto?
Just that further and, and don't be a bleep and bleep and wear a bleeping mask. I don't understand why people are so resistant to it. People are, we're sick and we're a community that thinks about one another and we serve one another. It's the same sentiment that brings us here tonight. Every one of us are in these positions because we love Ogden and we love to serve people of Ogden. And I hope that sentiment carries through to our community and and thank you, Marcia, for using such candid words. I know what you were thinking.
In other places, there'd be much, yeah. Any other comments? I don't know if we have a bleep tool. We'll have to ask Eric and Brandon about that, but a two-second delay so they can bleep us. Well, thanks everybody. I echo every sentiment that's been said so far. Honor the veterans and and obviously, I don't work in the front lines in healthcare, but I see every day lots of really intense and life-changing impacts from this situation. And, and yeah, I mean, I'm, I am so tired of meeting people on the screen as well, but we are so lucky. I mean, I think sometimes if we also think about just the great privilege that we all have to be able to access things this way. And, you know, most of us have a pretty warm home and food, you know, and those kinds of things too. So I try to focus on those positives to get me through as well. And I also wanted to point out, along with Doug's sentiment around shopping local, that it's us, it's Ogden Restaurant Week, but it's the whole month, this month. So those of you that can get out and support our local restaurants, you can order online, you can go pick up. And there are some other dining options too, so make sure you're out there supporting our local restaurants because that helps support our community as well. Thank you. So now, I believe we need someone, if somebody'd like to make a motion to go into the closed executive session.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adjourn into closed executive session for one of the items listed.
Thank you.
Second.
My motion by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Councilmember Nadolski to adjourn into a closed executive session. And I think I mentioned this before, that we will adjourn after that, just so the public knows. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer.
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski.
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Chaburka.
Aye. And that passes. Thank you, everyone. So maybe we'll wait a moment to, so everybody can let us know we're in closed executive session. That would be great.